Under the city council meeting of July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. First item will be the pledge of allegiance. Tonight that will be led by Spencer Lingwell.
Will the audience please arrive? Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three on the agenda, we have a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Asia Wilde. I am the new president of the Chamber of Commerce as of April eleventh of this year. And I just wanted to kind of give you an update of what I've been doing and what I've accomplished and what we plan to do in the future. As far as the accounting goes, I have an accounting background. And so one of the first things that I wanted to do when I got in there was to clean up the accounting records. I couldn't make heads or tails of what was going on. And so I've got that all cleaned up. And the chamber has been operating in the red for quite a while. We had one month where we were in the black, a hundred and twenty-one bucks. And so I just wanted to bring that up as we have this agenda item later on today on your agenda. The raising of our rent, a little bit concerned about that as we are not in the black yet. So I'd like to ask for a little bit more time on that one. Give me some time to get some traction before we discuss the lease agreement. Some of the good things, some of the good things are still going on. We're holding steady on our activities. We're still doing a lot of networking activities, a lot of women, our Women in Business program is still holding steady, our workshops, our Center of Influence luncheons, all of our regular activities are are holding steady and doing really well. We're getting a lot of feedback from a lot of people that participate in chambers throughout the valley that the West Jordan Chamber is really the most active chamber in the valley. And we've got the most activities going on, the most opportunities for them to participate and and grow business. So that's good news. Those things are holding steady. A couple of things that we've, there's a thousand little things that we've done, but some of the more notable things that I've been able to complete so far are the Craig Deering Legacy Award has been implemented and given to Craig Deering as a start. And nominations are now open on our website for citizens who are volunteering throughout the city in multiple capacities, maybe on multiple different committees, involved in different charities and different activities can apply to receive the Craig Deering Legacy Award. And we will give that to the first recipient in December at our gala. And yes, we are going to, one of my goals for the future here is to reinstitute having an annual gala, and that will be one of the, one of the awards. Our social media in the last few months, one of my objectives was to really tackle social media. And then over the past few months, we have been the number one chamber in the state for social media interaction. We have the highest percentage of social media interaction than any other chamber in the whole state. So we just need to, we need to grow our likes. We're only about a third of what the Salt Lake Chamber has as far as likes and followers, but we have a much higher engagement. The other thing that I've been able to implement that is working really well is the ambassador program. Lamont Snar and I sat down and kind of went through a list of activities that we would like chamber members to participate in, and we assigned points to each one of the activities. And each month, the ambassadors, it's kind of an honor system program at this point, the ambassadors submit what points they've earned in different areas. And they have the opportunity to earn an ambassador of the month award. I wanted to make it sort of quantitative. I think a lot of times when, when different organizations choose, especially chambers choose award recipients, it tends to be or appears to be arbitrary. And so I wanted it to be quantitative. So at the end of the month, based on whoever's got the most amount of points, we give them an ambassador of the month award. And we've done, this will be our second month tomorrow, June's will be awarded at our workshop. And the ambassador of the month receives some free advertising, you know, through our website, social media, newspapers, and things like that. So they have a little bit of incentive to participate. And then at the end of the year, again, at the gala, we'll do a cumulative total for the whole year of everybody's points, and whoever has the most points for the whole year is going to receive a cruise from the cruise lady on Redwood Road. And so coming up with that point system has really sparked a lot of activity with the ambassador group. And a lot of, we have a lot of new ambassadors that have come on board as a result of that. And we have a lot of ambassadors participating. We recently had a ribbon cutting at Royal Wholesale Electric out on Prosperity Road. And had it not been for our ambassadors who showed up in force, I think we might have had kind of a sad little crowd. So I'm just, and at this point, the ambassadors are taking off on their own. We had an ambassador meeting last week, and they're planning a retreat, and they want to do their own event. And at this point, I'm just kind of trying to hold on while they take off and and really do some, some great things. But it's been great to stimulate a lot of chamber presence in the community. So that's helped out a lot. Some things that I am looking at implementing here shortly, the Building West Jordan Initiative was kind of my little baby. I, I come from contractors and have a lot of friends that are contractors and wanted to put together a way for contractors to communicate and help each other out and support each other. And so Dirk Burton's been helping me with that. And we're getting some city officials involved as far as helping contractors, you know, understand code enforcement and the building application process and setting up some infrastructure for people to be able to communicate. We have a Facebook page for Building West Jordan. And we're planning on doing an economic development summit. David Oka and Paul Coats have been advising me and helping me put together a build, well, started out as kind of an economic development summit, but really, I think we're probably going to end up calling it the Building West Jordan Summit, where we'll give the city officials an opportunity to talk to developers and real estate agents, let them know what land is available, what the, what zoning, what the current zoning is, you know, and who's got different contracts going on right now, so they can kind of see what the city's vision is and see how they fit into that. And I have a couple of developers that are interested in getting involved in that, and a lot of people really excited about that. So probably looking at doing that summit probably sometime in February. So that's kind of out a little ways. That's going to take some time to, to build. Something that's going to be happening a little bit sooner is the Shopping West Jordan Want to get to some retail establishments. We have a directory listing on our webpage now of chamber members, and we are going to open that up to all businesses in West Jordan, so that every, every business in West Jordan can have a, a listing on the, the chamber website at a, at a basic level. Of course, chamber members will have more of a premium listing. But we wanted to make sure that all, that all businesses in the city of West Jordan are invited to participate in that shop local directory. It's, it's actually shoppingwestjordan.com. I had hoped to have that launched prior to this meeting, but I've run into a little bit of technical difficulties. So probably by the end of this week, we'll get a, you know, I want to have the, the forms on the website set up so that they can easily enter their directory information. And for some reason, the powers that be are against me. But we're going to do a telephone campaign probably by the end of this week to call all of the businesses that are licensed in the city of West Jordan and let them know that that's an opportunity to them, that's open to them. And then the ones that don't take advantage of that will probably do a mailer and try to follow up and try to get as many businesses in the city of West Jordan involved in that shop local directory. On the other side of that, the consumer side, driving consumers to, to see that, to see their listing on there. We, we currently get about three thousand hits a month on that directory. But what we're, we're going to do some things with the city journals through our partnership with them to get, drive consumers to that website. And that should give us about, I'll probably hit that every month in the city journals. And that, you know, that's thirty thousand citizens a month. And so hopefully we'll get some traction that way from the consumer side to make that directory of some value to the, to the businesses. So that's the Shopping West Jordan Initiative, and that's where, where we're at with that. We'll, I'll launch the business side of it hopefully by the end of this week and the consumer side of it by August, the first of August. That'll, the official launch will be the newspaper release. So watch the city journal in August for the Shopping West Jordan Initiative. And then I'd, I'd also like to do some things. I bought the, bought the URL Dining West Jordan. I'd like to do some focusing on restaurants in particular. David Oka and I had talked about how to kind of, you know, help out the restaurants with, with tourists, you know, people that are in the area for sports tournaments and various different things, to help them know what restaurants are in the city. And so I'd like, through the Dining West Jordan, I'd like to, you know, get some more exposure for restaurants with, especially with tourism, but also with the, you know, with the residents as well through the Shopping West Jordan Initiative. So those, those two kind of interweave. At this point, that's about all I have on the horizon as far as major initiatives go. Like I said, there's a ton of little things that we're working on, on a daily basis. But I'm open to suggestions, and I just want everybody to know that, you know, my door is always open. And if there, if you have an idea or something that you think we ought to be doing, stop in and talk to me. Or email is a great way for me to get things done. That's kind of my email inbox is one of my to-do lists. So, you know, if you want to get something taken care of, just let me know, and I'm happy to help with whatever.
I've worked with Asia since she came to the chamber, and I can state that for the first time in a couple of years, I think we're headed the right direction. So let's see better things in the future. We'll move now to communications, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot, a lot of times you've come to me on questions on some of the projects we've been doing, so I asked Dave Murphy to put together a, a register by department of everything we're doing. This will be a regular monthly report. We'll give it to you electronically. If you want a hard copy, let me know. But it's, it's all inclusive and answers a lot of my questions too. So if you have any questions, just let me know or Dave. Thank you.
City attorney?
Thank you. I'm normally standing on my feet when I'm in court room, but I am going to ask if I can do so to introduce two members of the city attorney's office, two newest members of the city attorney's office, Craig Deering, Duncan Murray. Craig comes from both private background and prostitution background, non-conserved, both has private practice and private practice, defense role, and has worked previously with the city manager. So combined, giving a little over twenty-five, close to thirty years of legal experience, issues like taxing, bonding, changing of government are all areas that these gentlemen are going to be able to help us through, traffic through, avoid hitting cones, and I look forward to introducing each one of them to you. And I hope they just want to have a partner. I mean, I need to propose that question. For them, sort of generally speaking, Duncan's covering the area along the floor, and Craig is covering the area of the lane, Deering is helping. So if you have any questions for them later, they're not going to be here, they'll stick around this tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome on board. I got to meet them last week, so we're happy to have you. Is that it, David? Is that all you had tonight, David? David Oka?
Nothing, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ryan?
Thanks, Mayor. Just, just a personal thanks to all the, the different staffing and departments that assisted us with then preparing for the Fourth of July celebration. It went really well on our end, having all the teamwork together. And then also, we have another soccer tournament taking place, starts tomorrow until Saturday out of the soccer complex. So once again, parking might be a little bit of an issue out there. That's all.
Thank you. Phil?
Nothing tonight.
Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got one bit of good news. We're about two and a half weeks away from receiving the last of our LED streetlight fixtures. The supplier for the residential fixtures has been giving us about two hundred and eighty-eight a week, and we are about two and a half weeks away from receiving the last one. And so we're wrapping those up in, in the residential neighborhoods and cleaning up loose ends and some of the collectors and materials. We should be done within a couple of weeks.
Great. Sure looks nice, too.
Thank you.
Chief McElroy?
Thank you, Mayor Kelt. Just wanted to report from our Fourth of July event that in the city, I appreciate all of our residents abiding by our fireworks restrictions, but also just the laws in general. We had no major fire incidents or injuries caused by fireworks. So it was a good, safe holiday.
Thank you. Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to remind you that National Night Out will be August, Tuesday, August seventh. We'll start here, second. What did I say? Oh, seventh, sorry, second. And that will be starting at around six o'clock, leave about six fifteen, and get to the various sites. So please, if, if you're so inclined, please come. I know that Councilmember Burton has organized one in his neighborhood, and he's trying to get a bunch of people there. And there are several others that are, I know are organized to this point, but I'm not sure of exactly their location. So please be aware for that. Also on, we have offered, made job offers for the two extra positions that council authorized. One will be starting as soon as next week. The next one will need to go through the academy, and we'll be starting the end of August to go through the academy and, and go through that. So we do have those two job offers out, and we're happy to, to get them on board with that. On July twenty-first, we'll have a badge pending for two officers that just started, plus one that starts this next week, and an awards ceremony. So that will be on the twenty-first, July twenty-first at four thirty over in our building. I also want to, in the wake of the shooting of police officers in Dallas, want to express, want to express my gratitude to our community. Our community supports us. We've had an outpouring of well wishes, sympathies, thank yous to our police officers, to my office, people dropping by wanting to express their thanks. Right now in our society, we're going through a rather dark time where people do not trust police officers, largely because of the way the media is portraying the actions of police officers. With some public officials, elected officials at the highest levels of our government, fortunately, none of our elected officials or our officials are in that group, but some of them making judgments about whether an officer acted appropriately or inappropriately before all the facts are in. When we do an investigation on citizens, we try and determine as many facts as we can before we arrest somebody or make statements or charging statements. Unfortunately, the media and some public officials are convicting officers before even the investigation has been even started in some cases. That's a tragedy. Here in West Jordan, we don't have that issue. Our officers are held to a higher standard, and they will always be held to a higher standard. We expect that of them. We expect them to have the, the fortitude, to have the courage to do the right thing. Will officers make mistakes? Of course they will. They are only human. They are asked to do extraordinary things under extraordinary circumstances, dealing with individuals who in some cases want to take their lives or do them harm. But they do their job day in and day out. And this community supports them, and I appreciate that. The men and women, the men and women of the West Jordan Police Department appreciate it. We appreciate your support as a council, the support of the other staff members in the city, and the city and our community. We have overwhelming support. Are there a few naysayers out there? Yes, there are. But we have overwhelming support. We tried our best to do the best that we can in an unbiased, professional manner, and we will continue to do that. And I just, again, thank you for all your support.
Would you please pass on that the mayor and the city council think you're all heroes? We appreciate what you do. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. I was able to attend most of the July Four celebrations in the city, and I want to say kudos to our staff and police and fire and everybody who was involved, parks especially, in putting those on. They were amazing, well done. The event staff as well, Julie Brown and her crew, with the rodeo, with the carnival, with the fireworks, the parade. It was, it was, other than the airplanes missing the route, I think we had the best Fourth of July celebration we could have had. You know, they were close, I saw them, even if they weren't overhead. So I want to say thank you for that, and, and I'm hoping to make next year's even better. So we'll see what, see what we can come up with there. And, and I just want to echo what Chief Diamond just said. I think you stole my notes, because I was almost going to say, well, I wasn't going to say thank you on behalf of the police department. I was going to say thank you to the police department. This week, this past week, putting on a uniform and a badge means a little more than, than it did last week. And so I just want to say that I appreciate you guys.
Councilmember Nichols? Got a few things to share tonight. First of all, I just want to express sympathy to the family of Bob Thoreau. For those who aren't aware in the audience, we lost our deputy city attorney. I got the pleasure of meeting him and working with him on the planning commission before I served on the council, and I greatly admired that, that man. Loved the jovial way in which he answered the phone call. And I say that with, with a lot of, a lot of fun. I love the way he answered the phone, and I'll miss him. Wish his family the best. Also, thanks, Chief. Appreciate you, the force. I got to enjoy the Fourth of July from afar in a foreign country. Unfortunately, I say begrudgingly, with my employer, you've heard this before, they kind of ship me where I am. I actually had to change my days off this year and my vacation plans as a result of days off changes. And it was the only weekend I could go to not miss a council meeting, and it was over July Fourth. So I enjoyed it from afar by watching Facebook, everyone posting the parade, pictures of the parade, pictures of rodeo. It was awesome. I was down there like, almost like I was here. There was so much shared on, on the social media that it was, it was outstanding. Anyway, from afar, I could see what a great event was. Thanks to, to the city staff, and also thanks to the council for supporting a great event. And I apologize for being late today. I should have started with that cue, but we, we were in the water board meeting, and the last item on the agenda tonight was to discuss the Jordan Aqueduct and how it relates to Banger Highway, and specifically the intersections of Seventy South and Ninety South. And knowing that it pertains directly to our city, I wanted to linger a little bit longer to make sure I had that, that conversation, that complete. I'm happy to say that as a taxpayer, I was pleased with the way UDOT's handling this one. I say that more at the local level, because what UDOT's agreed to do with Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, which impacts us directly, is to reimburse Jordan Valley that conservancy for their efforts on trying, any redesign efforts that are needed for the Jordan Aqueduct as Bangers improve. From, from a city standpoint, from a water user standpoint, I appreciate UDOT's efforts on that front. So I was pleased to report that to you. Additionally, particularly in the summer months, I, I always bring this up, I do it on a regular basis, I bring up conservation, how important conservation is. Specifically, I'm talking about water conservation. Year-round, conservation is important for our long-term sustainability, but now it's even more important. And I will always do this every July as I've done in the past. We are at the peaking factor time, where literally every drop of water you save in July and August can, will directly impact your water rates next year. Because our water rates next year are determined by what goes on in this peaking time. Because the Conservancy District has to plan for that peakest, that, that peak amount of water every year. If we can conserve, July and August is the time. Year-round, it's important for long-term sustainability. Right now is important for your financial, your back pocket. Last year, we did a good job as a city. Compared to our municipalities, we actually had a lower increase than most of the cities around us. And so I just, I put that out there, I put that plea to all the citizens in the city. Conserve, if there's a time to do it. Check your sprinklers right now. I just went out this week and just discovered I had three more sprinkler heads that were broken than I thought. I dug them up, and they were leaking. I had no clue. So take the time and take the effort. It could, it can make an impact for the city. I tried to take so much time tonight, but thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Higa?
Thanks, Mayor. Just two things, you know, I, our parks are looking fantastic. I just want to say that. I, I have an opportunity to go up and down the Jordan Trail. They're, they're groomed better than they ever have been. There's a little duck beach there. I know it's not designed for ducks, it's designed to launch boats, but the ducks still like it. But, and then just being amongst, in the park during the celebration, they look fantastic. So I just wanted to shout out to our Parks Department. I know this, so, because I use the park. The other thing to, in my heart, I think West Jordan Police Department is the best department in the state. And I know it's a brotherhood, but I just personally echo, I have over and over again how proud I am. how proud I am of our police department. They're the guys that put themselves between us and the bad guy. And thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to also echo our sentiments to the police department of West Jordan. Thank you and please make sure all the men and women there understand that. We appreciate them. And thank you for all those who helped the Fourth of July celebration and the fantastic Independence Day celebration we had for two days here in West Jordan. Carnival to rodeo to fireworks, to the parade, to the movie in the park, to the van concert. It was fantastic. Too bad it only comes once a year, but I'm looking forward to next year. And then also I want to express a thank you to Maverick. As you know, we've talked about the building of that location on 13th, 78 South. They are providing permission for residents, and if you want to be included, you certainly may, to go in and look for any artifacts or any historic things that before they begin their building, which is, may happen in just a couple of weeks. So I want to mention a couple of names who've helped that happen for Maverick. One is Rick Magnus, who's the senior entitlement manager. Tom Schofield, who's their attorney. Steve Bennett, who's their vice president in marketing. And then we also have a special thank you to Bill Globdalski, who's being an advisor and providing the detection equipment, some fantastic metal detectors. So if you know anyone who wants to come and join our party over there, mostly on the next two Saturdays and some evenings, then feel free to contact Jaylen Thomas and she can help schedule you there because we need to sign release forms. So if we get hurt while we're on their property, they know that we'll be nice about it. And then one other thing, just for fun, last month, I decided to keep track of how many hours I spend in meetings and other events directly related to my position as the city council. So that doesn't count answering the telephones or checking emails. Those are just meetings and other events that I went to. And it totaled about 100 hours last month. And I know that sounds low because last month only had 30 days in it. But anyway, that was just kind of a fun little survey that I put together to see what I could do. And then as our attorney was telling us about the additional legal experience that we have coming to our attorney staff. That's wonderful. How much of that is illegal experience? I, not worth repeating. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
I would just like to thank all those that were involved in the Fourth of July celebration as well. We had a great one this year. In fact, the best for a number of years, I believe. I would like, Bill, your department, to let us know. I know that we are the highest grossing year ever. I'd like to see the gross versus the net in the next few weeks, if we could, on the entire celebration. And thanks again, everyone, for putting on such a great celebration.
Mayor?
Yes.
Two items, are you done or?
I'm done, yes.
Okay. Going to, back to lighting, the council did approve an extra quarter of $1 million to light areas that are dark. And Chief Diamond has been working with Public Works to identify those and so you'll see that program moving ahead. And appreciate his staff for doing that. And we also did receive an apology from the Air Force for missing the road. We are on the schedule for next year. I'm sure they do a lot better in Afghanistan.
Yeah, it was disappointing after like seven years of absence to have them miss Redwood Road, so.
Mayor, I told them we should have popped smoke so that they knew where to shoot for.
Yeah, it would have been really cool, but some of us got to see them way over on Bangerter. We will now move to citizens' comments. I have two signed up to speak tonight. The first, as a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak on your subject. The first is Alexandra E. Framlin.
Mayor and council, thank you. Let's pause for a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. I am brokenhearted. The policemen in Dallas did not deserve what happened to them. They are, according to the news, they are the best police department in the United States of America. In the last 10 years, they have decreased the number of fatalities and things that have happened in their department. I would suggest our own department, our own police department, find out what Dallas is doing. And they said their police officers make $44,000 a year plus benefits, of course. But anyway, in the last two years, starting with Michael Brown, or Michael, I can't remember, in Jefferson, Missouri. Starting with him in two years, okay, we have not had one police officer that has been acquitted of anything. They're holier than thou. We've had white policemen killing black citizens. And in the Justice Department in the United States of America is really unbelievable. I can't believe it. I can't believe what's happening. That not, and I don't blame the people that say black lives matter because they do. But it just, it just appalls me. It appalls me even, I went yesterday to Salt Lake County Council and I couldn't believe that the, one of the council members said that we have had nothing wrong here in Salt Lake City. Hello, we had the man with the shovel. He was killed. We had the incident of the, of the samar, I mean of the sword. It was at 11. But anyway, I have a lot more to say. I wish I had time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I believe the chief has already stolen my thunder along with the rest of you. I have lived in my home for over 50 years and in that length of time, I have never lived in fear until four months ago. Four months ago, strange things started to happen at my home. My husband's been dead almost six years. I still did not live in fear, living alone in my home. But about four months ago, strange things started happening between the hours of 1:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the morning. I had ignored it to begin with and I let it go. But then it started happening two, three, four times a night. I am alone. So I did call our police and the response was remarkable. I didn't identify myself as a former city councilperson, nor do I think they knew that. But they were there. They came in twos. They investigated my entire property, which is an acre in size. I'm on a dead end road. They drove up and down the road to see if there was anyone there. This went on for four months. And every time I called, those police officers were there. They treated me with great respect. I felt bad calling them because each time they did not find the culprit that was doing this or culprits. We did have a house in our neighborhood that was in quite disrepair and not good people living there. It may have been attributed to them. I also started receiving mail that was not to me, but to my address. But every time I called dispatch, she stayed on the phone with me until the policeman knocked on my door to tell me the police were there so that I could open the door. We have one of the greatest police forces that we can talk about. And I just highly recommend that you understand that our citizens understand that. They treated me very well. I'm sure they got tired of coming out and finding nothing. But they knew I was in fear. I have now got one of the highest priced security systems you can get. It is not happening just occasionally now. But due to the action of the police, I no longer live in fear. And I know to this day that if I called them, they would be there and they would treat me with respect and they would never once complain about doing that. And not to leave Chief McElwade out, I also had, and I don't know if you'd call it the opportunity, to call and have the paramedics come, which they did immediately, transported me to the hospital where I had to stay four days. But that also was done in a very nice manner. And it just, we should really appreciate them. So like I say, maybe my thunder got stolen, but I did want the chief to pass that on to his officers because we have a very good, we may have problems in West Jordan, but it is in our police and fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in citizen's comments, please? Would you please state your name and address?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, my name is Blair Gurney. I live at 9109 South 1500 West in the River Ridge subdivision behind Stock Lumber. I think I'm in District 2 under Mr. Burton. I've lived in that location for about 17 years on 1500 West, which is the back of the subdivision. A lot of the homes in our subdivision are very close together and a lot of twin homes with a lot of young families with a lot of kids. The streets are narrow. I haven't approached council before this because I just retired and decided I would take time to come and talk to council about an issue that's been going on for a long time for me. Because of the type of neighborhood we have, several children have been hit by cars because they have no place to play. There's no green space in our subdivision. Originally, the 1500 West on the municipal plan was to be extended to Brigadoon Park, which is down further south into the right. Unfortunately, a prefab house was put in there and the land was purchased by an individual who now claims that that's his land, which is still, I believe, private land or municipal property. I'm not sure county property or city property. But we have so many kids. And when I, I came to the engineering department several years ago and I said, what, where's our green space? And they said, well, it's Brigadoon Park. And I said, how do kids get there? They can't get there. There's no place to go. There's no access. What I'm suggesting here, Mr. Mayor and council, is that we need to spend the funds as a taxpayer base to extend 1500 West to Brigadoon Park so that the kids in my subdivision have a place to play and a place to go and a place to walk their dog and take their families if they so choose. This is really incredible because I thought when I moved there and the municipal plan was brought forward to extend that street to Brigadoon Park, I thought it was going to happen. Then there was a downturn in the economy and it was decided to subdivide that and put a prefab house in that location, which I found was really strange that the city of West Jordan would have even approved that because prefab housing, as you well know, really does not do much for property values for a subdivision. Sorry. So my request maybe to Mr. Burton, if he wants to come and chat with me, I would be happy to. My phone number is 801-556-8770. I, you know, I'm sorry, my time is up. If, if you would like to do that, I'd appreciate that. I'm trying to help our children and our families to have a nice place to go so that they can enjoy their life and have a quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in citizen's comments?
High Hensy, 3087 West, 7140 South. I apologize, I've written down the time incorrectly. I write you're late. Is Blinksters still on the agenda?
It's not. It's been removed from the agenda.
Okay. Then I have nothing to say. Thank you.
I will close citizens' comments and we will move to the consent calendar, consent items.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to table item 6C. There's a change in the language and move it to the next council meeting.
Item 6C?
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
6E, Mayor. Thank you.
6E. Councilmember Jacob?
I'd like to pull item J for discussion as well.
Okay, a motion would be in order. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent items, less C, E, and J.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion and motion? See none? So?
Councilmember Darden?
Yes.
You got it all?
Yes.
That was. Okay, yes. Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Hega?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes by in favor.
We'll go to item 7A. Receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance 16-30, amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code, Title 13, zoning regulations, adding 13-8-24, mural or art, wall art, citywide applicability. City of West Jordan applicant, David Oka?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Langford is here to address this issue.
Mayor, members of the council, this has gone around for quite a while and for some of the members of the council who may not have gone through all of the history, I'll give a quick summary. Attention to this issue was brought over a year ago and we've had several planning commission meetings, several city council meetings regarding this item. It was kind of highlighted based on the business located at 3202 West, 7800 South. It's no longer an issue currently. The property owner has since painted over the mural that kind of initiated this discussion. That being said, it's always good to be proactive and so on page two of your staff report, there's a little bit of history there. Back in December, the city council reviewed a draft ordinance that dealt with this. It wasn't quite to the council's liking and so you sent it back to the planning commission. The planning commission worked with our legal staff who drafted another revision. That was brought back to the planning commission. It wasn't quite the way that the commissioners felt that it should be. And so the planning commission actually took initiative from that time forward, drafted the text as you see it. They worked with planning staff, the attorney's department, and we've presented this. And we've presented this latest draft to the council for consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we feel that it meets all of the required findings of fact for text amendments. And it's a proactive approach to not just dealing with a specific item, but citywide as we may have more of these requests come in the future. So that's all I've got.
Questions from council? Councilmember Burton?
My question is on C4. It states that the mural is not permitted on walls of stone or unpainted or unsealed brick. So if it happens to be cinder block, I'm thinking a mural may look better than cinder block would be, would it be allowed on cinder block according to what C3 says?
As long as they apply a sealant over it, the porous nature of cinder block or other similar materials, it makes it very difficult to remove or alter. It just sucks it right into that material. So if a sealant, a pre-sealant was put on in advance of the mural, then that would be okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Haga?
Thanks, Mayor. So final approval of mural is the zoning administrator?
Right.
Is that David Oka?
That's me.
My question is, and this came up last year, and I don't think you were here to back that, was what is art? What is a mural art? Is a mural art? So if you're the administrator to make those judgments, what background of art do you have as administrative zoning administrator?
Well, I don't have a significant background in art, but I do, I can apply the criteria listed in here. If it's advertising a name of a business or if it's not an original work of art, if they're just replicating a trademark or replicating a logo or whatever, then it's very clear per this ordinance that it does not meet the definition of a mural. It needs to be an original work of art. And luckily, I will not unilaterally make that decision. I've got a lot of great staff members. And if for some reason I feel that it does not meet these requirements and I deny that, then we already have an appeal process built into our code where it's appealed to the planning commission. And if that's not good enough, then guess what? It comes before the city council. So we have an appeal process already baked into the code. So based on these findings, I certainly did not campaign to have the zoning administrator be the approval authority here. This was written by the planning commission, but it's written, has simplicity there so that I can just review the, you know, the simple criteria. If it meets those, great. If not, then, you know, we go through the appeal process and then we have more eyeballs looking at it.
First of all, I'm not saying that you're not artistically inclined.
I can draw. I can sketch.
If that came across. I'm just saying, you know, the Salt Lake ordinance, and I appreciate what planning and zoning has done here. This is a subject that we had to deal with. And I'm not in any way, you know, in other words, I support this. I'm just concerned about will we encounter somebody that considers something art and we don't, you know, because of culture and other things. Salt Lake City, we might want to look at this later on if we have to, has an art committee that actually determines what art is for a mural and what art is for a statue, things like that. So, but again, I'll have confidence that your expertise still will keep this alive. It's good to have it or done by this. I'm a proponent of this. Thanks.
Still a comment by the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted just to identify that Councilman Haga's question has real credibility. The question he poses is the same one we're going to get from a judge. That question is, why him? How come? That question was one that has most cities challenged right now as to how to proceed. Over a year and a half ago, close to two years now, the United States Supreme Court issued an opinion that left municipalities struggling with how to define art. And we were at a conference this past spring in which most of the municipalities from the state of Utah were present, and nobody wanted to take lead and be in front on this issue. A lot of us there wanted to see Salt Lake City, as they are the largest, have some of the greatest amount of resources, sort of take lead on this, describe to us what a statute would look like that would be effective. And they had quickly backed away saying, "No, no, it's not going to be us." So we're trying, I suppose, in some ways to lead, but I think the question posed is a very valid one. And it's why it's left the legal staff struggling with whether or not this is appropriate.
I just have a question just before we go on. Would it be your advice not to have this particular verbiage in our code?
Let me answer it this-
It seems like this problem, I have put you on the spot, but it seems like it might be problematic.
That's why you hired me. I understand that. In this instance, you have a member of our planning commission who has, as a lawyer, felt compelled to follow through on the obligations you presented over a year ago to come back with a proposed change to city ordinances. Calvin Green has been adamant about doing his responsibility civic obligation that you've assigned him. At the same time, while this was proceeding, Darian Alcorn, myself, and now Duncan Murray just recognize that when we identify a single individual as being the individual that will define what art is, we're setting ourselves up for that opportunity for someone to challenge. So at the present time, we don't have a lot of these type of issues coming before us. Since the last one, I don't think we've had one since. So my personal opinion would be no, we shouldn't change. We shouldn't adopt additional terms and ordinances that could be challenged. Because frankly, you could see someone, having seen this ordinance passed, decide to challenge us. And I think we'd have an obligation to go to court and do so. It would be expensive and it would take some time to work its way through the court system, maybe a year. But that's something, that's your community. If you want us to do that, we'll certainly be there, ready to defend your decision.
Do you have a follow-up?
Thanks. On the legal issue, you mentioned that Salt Lake does not have an ordinance. And I'm going to have to say I disagree with you. We were at the rally last year, actually had a staff member from Salt Lake that gave me the verse which I sent the staff on their ordinance. I thought that's maybe something that we're following. Are you not aware of that?
No, they have an ordinance, but they don't have it defined as we're trying to define it with a process of approval. So that's, I apologize if I wasn't clear about that, Councilman. But the process we're proposing is of first of its type in the Valley, where you actually have a mural before it's painted or presented, would have to have the approval of an administrator. And when you start talking about First Amendment rights, I think everyone here recognizes that privilege is something that is unique to the United States. And I don't want to be the one trampling on that right.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, after this discussion, my question seems like mild. I just wanted to ask why, what the thought process is as far as allowing them in zones but not residential zones? Just out of curiosity.
I didn't draft this ordinance. So I wish, I wish the commissioners could answer that, but-
Were they, did they discuss that particular item in the, I mean, I didn't see it in the minutes, but did that come up?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Curious. All right, that was my question. I have a lot of thought now, based on the other questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the attorney's advice, which I'm going to echo that advice, but I do have, I like Councilman Haga's advice too on having a committee instead of a single person. But I also want to bring up C3. I'm just curious why C3 would exist? No murals will be placed over any building opening? Well, I've seen murals on building openings. I've seen them go across doors. You can even see the doors there, across windows or vents. And this specifically eliminates that. Do you know why that would be worded that way?
I'd have to go and pull up the original documentation that Commissioner Green sent. He did do quite a bit of research on this. He researched codes from along the Wasatch Front to California, to Oregon. And so a lot of this is reflected in other ordinances across the country. I don't have all of his footnotes to answer that question.
Thank you. That's good enough for right now. I'm also likely to express to Commissioner Green that he said, that it was worth the work that he's done. I noticed in several emails just for the few months I've been on the council, I can't imagine how much work he's done prior to that. So we appreciate his work and his effort in this, even if we don't adopt it today.
Okay.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just didn't have time to call you today. But in the notes in the packet today, it's discussing, or we have the minutes of the planning commission meeting, specifically this portion of the packet, there are twenty pages. On page eight, it's showing the planning commission minutes. And it shows that Calvin Green moved to forward a positive recommendation with some stipulations. But then it indicates the motion was withdrawn to make, or for discussion on additional changes. And then it talks about Josh striking certain things, but then it never has another vote after that. So I was, really my question is this, is what the planning commission passed, are those changes reflected in the ordinance we're considering tonight? All their changes have been, their recommendation that passed 6O is everything being reflected in what we're being presented?
Yes. I apologize that not all the minutes got in there, but they are all reflected in that draft ordinance. And essentially what they, the first motion had a little, a couple more sections. After some discussion and clarification, it was determined that the extra review and some of the stipulations were not needed. What it boiled down to was how do you, how do you split this wall art mural stuff from our sign code? And, you know, what is a sign? What is art? And so they felt that simplicity was the best approach, and so they stripped out some of that. So it is accurately reflected.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt, just one more time. I think I can answer Councilman Jacob's question of why residents are excluded. It's because murals generally in residential communities tend to lean towards, murals are generally seen in industrial areas and where the protections have been greatest for time, place, and manner have been in those that are commercial industrial areas. Really, when you start getting into a residential area, it's really hard. If you're advertising engine repairs in your neighborhood because you do those in your garage, that's going to be something that's easier to by time, place, and manner to identify as a business-related sign. But if the side of your garage is a sunset with lots of flowers and the word, the clouds spell out peace, it's going to be really hard to regulate that type of a mural. Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing for item 7A. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Now would be the time.
I'm Alexandra Ephraimou, 3735 Jud Circle. You know, this issue came up whenever the Mexican restaurant had the mural on their, on their building. Nothing had ever come up before until this happened. I'm sorry they painted over it because they didn't wait until, well, due process. But you know, if you go down Salt Lake City, there are so many really, really nice murals. And some of the places that they have, they have murals rather than graffiti. And it has been really nice. Road Home, if you saw on the paper, I mean, they've done things for the family and children on the background. And there are a lot of really, really nice murals. I agree. I am not an abstract person. I do not like abstract art. We had a display here at the gallery. I did not like it at all. So some people do like some art, some others, but it's individual. But I do like many of the murals down in Salt Lake City. So I'm surprised about a code ordinance that there, whether or not they had to do that or whether all of a sudden the artist's up there. But I like it. And I think that we should really, really, we don't have anything like it. I'm saying we can limit. We don't want every other building to have a mural, but I think we can limit it. And I love art and I would really, really recommend that we do pass this particular ordinance because it's the beginning. And it was a nice mural on that Mexican restaurant, however, not approval at that moment with West Jordan policies. So it was a shame that it went down. But I would be very much in favor of it. I would hate to have us be the only West Jordan city to say no murals, you know? It's just, I don't know. Anyway, I'm definitely for the ordinance. I think we should. We do control what kind of art it is, fortunately. They do have to go through a process, so that's good. You just can't paint blue, 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 or white, white, white. But anyway, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing of item 7A. And I'd like to make a motion that we table this item indefinitely. And until at least we have a seven-member council to vote on this. That's a motion.
I'll second the motion and I'd like to ask a question for me.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Rolfe and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Burton?
If we do not pass this, does that mean nobody can have a mural in West Jordan?
No, you can still have mural art going up. You wouldn't have the process that's described in the ordinance as the analysis used. We'd still use the same prior determinations. If it's being, if it's a business sign, we'd regulate it that way. If it's promoting the repair of engines in a garage, we'd look at it as if it was a business sign. If it's, so we're not going to change our process unless this is adapted. Does that answer your question?
So if it's, I guess the question is, we brought this to you in the first place, is that considered a sign when it's a mural? And that's why we went to all this.
The tipping point, Councilmember Burton, was when they painted the name of their business in conjunction with the other artwork. That was a clear commercial advertisement of the business, and so that's where our department got involved. Up until that point, there, as our city attorney indicated, they were, they were fine to paint the building the way that they had it before.
Thank you, thanks. Councilmember Haga?
Yeah, I have another legal question. So say a presidential candidate, Republican or Democrat, decided to paint a mural on the side of a building of their face. Would that be regulated by this ordinance or is that allowed? Now I'll tell you why I'm asking this question.
You're just, are you Nolan Ryan? You're throwing me a fastball right at my head. It's an easy, we're not going to regulate that because political speed- It's, it's an easy, we're not going to regulate that because political speech is one of those that was first recognized by the Supreme Court as protected.
And that's why I bring this up. The mural in question, and I think there's just two of us that were there, and the mayor looked at it too, was a political mural.
If I remember, I was not here at the time, but it's my understanding it addressed labor issues and farming issues, had some historical figures, there are caricatures on the wall, and that is a political statement and would be very, very difficult to regulate. We'd be subject to what's called strict scrutiny, and we'd have to show a compelling reason to the court's satisfaction that that mural was somehow harmful to the community. And when it comes to political speech or political ideas, that's going to be really hard to establish.
And even though I have no problem delaying this, I think we have to have a process. I think the residents that I stood by, over two or three hundred people, just want a process. They just want to know that it can come to us, they can come to our staff, and know what to do when it comes to mural. And these were artists that painted these murals. I haven't, I'm not objecting to the motion. I think, though, it would be better to pass it and start massaging a better, more fine tune as we encountered it. Right now, we have nothing still. So anyway, thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarifying question. In the motion, I heard to postpone it indefinitely, but then I also heard postpone it until there were seven members of the council present. Was it, is it just until we have seven members?
No, indefinitely, but to make sure that there were seven members of the council present if it gets brought up. This is a big issue. Besides the political figures that were on that building, there was also a skull on there, and it was, there was a lot of different things on there that weren't of any kind of political taste. So I think that, I think that the ordinance as it sits is still better than what sits before us today. Maybe we can finalize it, but I won't be supporting it. So, or this change, I should say. So that's why I like to table it.
Okay, so just want to, so we're just tailoring this maybe till next council meeting? Or are we?
Well, next council meeting, we'll have a full council either from what I've been told, so that's why I said indefinitely.
But this will be coming back on an agenda. I just want to know that we're just not shelving it.
No, I'm not planning to. I think-
Because if we're just bringing it back to the seven of us, I would be supportive of the motion. If we're shelving it, I'm not supportive of the motion.
Agreed. Yeah, I'm not planning to show, but I think that it's important enough that, we need to relook at it, and I think seven members need to vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
That's just my opinion, of course. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Mayor Rolfe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan.
No.
They'll pass this four to one in favor.
Item seven B, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance sixteen dash three one, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan municipal code Title thirteen, section thirteen dash two dash three, and thirteen dash five F dash two distinguishing data center as a permitted use in the M one zone, citywide applicability, city of West Jordan applicant. David?
Yes, thank you. Scott Langford will address this. To start with, I think it's important to clarify that under the current code, current definitions that we have in the zoning ordinance, we could permit and have, in fact, allowed data centers in West Jordan. We have Oracle out west. As, as technology evolves, as we see increased demand for, for data and data storage, we've noticed around the country that their, that data center as a specifically, as a specific use is popping up. And, and so based on the evolution of our society and data and technology, we're recommending that the council consider this amendment to allow data centers in the M one zone. We don't want to allow it in other industrial zones, the M two, to be specific. M two is reserved for very heavy industry. And that is our only zoning district that allows sexually oriented businesses and those types of things where we're legally required to accommodate. So we wanted to not encourage additional property in West Jordan to be zoned M two. We wanted to just keep this in the M one zone, which by and large, that is most of our industrial property in West Jordan. So we've gone through the findings of fact and believe that it meets all the criteria, and we recommend that the council consider approval of this text amendment.
Councilmember Hagan.
So I understand what a data center is, and you've defined that pretty well. However, what is data? What kind of data can they have? Have we defined that? Can it be pornography? Can it be, I mean, what's the limit? Are we going to control that part of the data center?
That, the definition of data, I've never seen that specifically defined in any of the ordinances that I've read, and I don't know if there's a legal reason as to why it's not nailed down specifically. I probably, I'll turn the time over to our city attorney.
Well, I can tell you if it's obscene, it's illegal, and we have our own ICAT group at the Attorney General's Office tracking that. If it ends up at that on those servers, they'll seize them. On the other hand, if it's simply old-fashioned pornography, it's probably protected by the Constitution.
So that, I guess I should propose that as a question. So we do not have a definition of data? Yes or no?
No, we don't.
Thanks, Scott. We'll now open the public hearing for item seven B. If you're here to speak on that item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, item seven B, and return to the council. Councilmember Nichols.
I have a motion if there's no other comment.
That would be an order.
I move to approve ordinance sixteen dash three one.
Seven. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote. Oh, wait, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to oppose this motion just because it's, there's too many variables as far as this zoning area. It's, I know it's based on conditional, I guess it's a permitted, a nonpermitted.
Just permitted.
But again, just like the murals, I think there's too many unanswered questions, so I'll oppose the motion.
Let's vote. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I actually believe exactly the opposite, and I just wanted to stress that I will be supporting this based on the fact that without it being in there, we're essentially saying you can't be here. And because of the way our wording is, you're saying data centers can't come unless you include it. So we need to support it if you want a data center to come here technically is what we're saying.
At least it makes it a permitted use.
Right, it makes it a permitted use.
Leave it.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan.
No.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
They'll pass this four to one in favor.
Public hearing, item seven C, received public input and considered for approval, resolution sixteen dash one twelve, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Chamber of Commerce lease agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. City manager.
Actually, this wasn't my item, but we actually don't, you know, support going the full thousand dollars from one hundred. I mean, a thousand percent seems a little bit draconian at this point, but we'd be open to any amendment to this or to table it as Asia indicated. So she has the time to look at it a little bit more.
I'd like to table it after the public hearing. If there's anyone to speak on it, I'd like to hear them first. Councilmember Hagan.
So our city manager, Mark Pallas, what has kind of motivated the reason to increase their rent?
Like I said, I did not initiate this, so I'm not sure what motivated it.
Former council discussions what motivated it?
If I can just provide some background, the city has previously had lease agreement that in two thousand and six reflected four hundred and fifty dollars in a month. At some point after that date in two thousand and nine, there was a amendment, that's amendment number one, it was reduced to one hundred dollars a month. During the preparation of the lease, there was a suggestion made to the city attorney's office from a member of the elected that asked for it to be considered higher. The amount was one thousand, so it could be discussed in a public meeting openly and allow everyone to have their say and input. That's why I proposed, or that's why the document was prepared as it was.
So just, so again, some legal questions. So we have a contract with the chamber. And does the contract have anything, any language that is specific? You can't hear me? Hello? Does it have any language pertaining to rent? So there are contracts with the city that was approved on this current year budget, this current year budget, does it have anything pertaining to rent?
It is a pass-through agreement, so the previous agreement reflected one hundred dollars, and that's what it's been previously. So it didn't reflect a thousand dollars, it reflected-
No, it did not.
So we need to do a budget amendment to update their contract?
Well, it'll be, it'll be an additional revenue, and so you don't really need to do that until other things, you know? We do, we actually do a budget amendment several times during the year, and it's not necessary to do it immediately. We can wait till other things make it necessary to adjust the budget.
I will now open the public hearing for item seven C. Anyone here wishing, please come forward.
I'm Alexandra Ephraim, thirty-seven, thirty-five, Judd Circle. I am absolutely, one million percent against keeping the lease agreement at one hundred dollars because nobody in their right mind would occupy that space down there for a hundred dollars. It was a political move by Melissa Johnson to go ahead and decrease it from a hundred, a thousand dollars down to one hundred dollars. And because of the things that, I love the new CEO, she's going to have a big job ahead of her, but because of the last three years that have, that have happened and how they treated Craig Daring, I am, I'm saying no. How they treated me, I'm not allowed to become a chamber person, only because they don't like me. So the current board of, of the chamber, they need to resign. She needs to get new people in there. The, we used to have three hundred and seventy businesses that belonged to the chamber. Now I think it's down to a hundred and seventy. And that's because of the corrupt board that they have. And to me, you're not going to, we need to open our eyes and realize what happened, what has been happening with that old board. The old board kicked me out. I was a member at the time. I attended one of their meetings. I was a member, and the board said I had to leave. They ended up calling security, they ended up calling the police, they said I had to leave. And the police said, why does she have to leave? She's a member. And only because, one time on the phone, I mean, I have, when I was a member, I called and called and called. I wanted to get my, my code so I could find out. I called twenty times, and they said, oh, our computers are down. This is prior to the new CEO. This is, nobody would ever give me an answer. So one day, I did say, I was at home, I said, if I had a gun, I would shoot, period. Okay, not good idea, but I was so furious, twenty times, and they, and it was, and then I ended up at the doorway of the old CEO, she, she called the police and said I had a gun. Twenty, no, twelve policemen came and circled me and frisked me to see if I had a gun. So I'm not in favor of keeping it at a hundred. We need to get it back to a thousand. Nobody would ever have that. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during, please?
I just want to note that, I don't know for sure, but I've heard that the rent was reduced as a result of the contract amount being reduced at that same time. And the, I just want to say that the chamber appreciates the space, we appreciate the low rent. I know that it's customary for the city to grant space to nonprofits at a free or reduced rate, and I don't think it's unusual, and we're, and we're just really grateful for it and just appreciate whatever you can do to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Asia Wilde, I'm the president and CEO of the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob.
Oh, I was waiting to ask the public hearing, please.
I thought you had a question maybe.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Anyone else? I will now close the, close the public hearing of item seven C. Return to the council. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, at a hundred dollars a month, it is symbolic, I think. It's kind of like the city's one dollar a year lease on the soccer fields. It's saying, pay us something so that we can call it valuable consideration so we can have a contract. I think it's silly that we ask them to give us money after we give them money. Why don't we just reduce our forty-eight thousand dollar a year contribution by twelve hundred dollars and call it even?
Is that a proposal?
No. No, that's not a motion. In other words, I think if we raised it to a thousand dollars a month, why not just reduce the amount we give them to thirty-six thousand dollars a year instead of forty-eight thousand dollars a year? It just, it seems arbitrary to talk about how much we ask the chamber to pay back to the city for the office space when the city pays the chamber for our membership and for our contract and for the services the chamber provides. It seems like, like the right hand giving the left hand money, they're asking for it back. It's kind of the, it seems circular to me. I agree that we need to have something in place. You know, they need to pay something for the space for valuable consideration for a contract for the reasons that they're doing it now, but I don't agree with, with raising the fee at this point or really ever. If we, if we don't want them to be in City Hall, then let's tell them we don't want them to be in City Hall, but let's not go, go around it this way. Thanks.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Sorry I have to kind of come down, but. So as, you know, past board member and chairman of the chamber, I understand the contract pretty well and how we dealt with the city, and this is a budgetary item. Every year, prior to the budget, the chamber and the board would appear in front of the council and ask like other organizations for money, and thereby the, the budget reflected that amount. If we're going to raise their rent, then we raise the rent, but we have to do it in a proper way, and that is a budgetary way. We have, we have to have a budget amendment, in my opinion, and I can give you many precedents even since I've been on council that requires this, one with the Arts Council, if you recall. One with the Arts Council, if you recall, we were required to have a public hearing and a budget amendment for $2,500. So the precedence there that we have, if we're going to raise their rent, which is significant, that it becomes part of a budgetary item, and we do that as soon as possible.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I just have one comment that's kind of related to what's been said, but I view the chambers, I mean, the next item on our agenda is a lease agreement with South Valley Services, and I view it as a partnership with our organizations. We just did this a couple months ago with a nonprofit that the mayor and councilman McConaughey, your spouses, were involved in the board of directors in a nonprofit, and we partnered with that organization. And I view that the partnership we have with the chamber is just as vital. It's one of those services we provide the community, but it's got that little focus of economic development. I don't see any benefit in increasing the fee. I'll just leave it at that.
Just to be clear, we don't give any of the other organizations $48,000 a year.
I understand that, I understand that, and that's part of our deal, is a partnership. That's what, we just, we just signed an agreement, just not, what, a month and a half ago?
For $48,000?
Yeah, for $48,000 to continue with our current situation.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Just one other thing that I wanted to add, and then if it's okay, I have a motion. And that is, to the city, we're talking a difference of $10,800. The city has a $120 million budget and change, right? It's really finding money in the couch for the city. The chamber has a budget of, well, let's just say a lot less. And for the chamber, it's the equivalent of, you know, a new car payment, or something big like that. A new car payment is big for me, I don't know if it's big for everybody. So to this, to my point of view, and full clarification, I serve as the city council liaison to the chamber. So full disclosure there. To me, it's capricious, it's, 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 comes off as vindictive, if nothing else. And so with that said, I would move to deny resolution 16-114.
Second. A motion by councilmember Jacob and a second by councilmember Haga. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Public hearing item 7D, received public input and considered for approval, resolution 16-113, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the South Valley Services lease agreement. David Bricky.
Your mayor, Jim? I'm sorry, what was the question?
This is public hearing item 7D. The South Valley Services lease agreement has your name on it.
And Ms. Jennifer Campbell is present from South Valley Services. If you have any questions for her, she can approach and answer them. But this is a similar type of service contract where the small space that's being utilized down on the main floor, we're renewing it basically for the same amount previous to last year.
Questions from council? Councilmember Haga.
No, I read it different. I'm reading that we do charge South Valley Sanctuary a fee, but that we waive that rent.
That is correct. It is one of those though where it's a pass-through, and I thought it more appropriate to make sure it's part of a public hearing, so if anyone should challenge later, we can certainly have had on the record a discussion about that amount, what that amount was, and whether or not it was appropriate.
So it's a waiver, not an increase in any way, like the last public hearing?
Correct.
I'll now open the public hearing for item 7D. Anyone here wishing to speak? Now would be the time, please.
Alexandra Ephraim, 3735 Jud Circle. I mean, we keep talking about this, but I don't know how much money, I mean, we say equal to last year, but I don't know what last year was. I mean, it's a much smaller space than the chamber, that's for sure. But this is a charity. We have, I don't know, there is some time during the year we have a charity with, where we donate so much money to about 20 different charities. This is one of the charities that we have. So I think the space is a lot smaller, but I'm still trying to find out how much money, or was it no money, was it that they didn't have to pay any? So we're not being very transparent about that, because I'm not sure, I don't read the budget, I don't know, but I just wish somebody would specify the amount. But I think even if it's $100 a month for them, or whatever, but it's a charity, it's a totally different thing than the Chamber of Commerce, because the Chamber of Commerce in the last three years have been corrupt, and we should recognize the fact that they're corrupt. We're supporting a corrupt chamber, or we happen. I hope and pray she's going to take control of it, but anyway, I'd still like to know how much money, so anyway.
Mayor, would you like me to address that? The amount is $5,100, it's roughly $425 a month for services provided by the entity.
To the residents of West Jordan?
Correct. It's for individuals who, when they're in need of shelter, care, support, maybe even a bus ticket someplace where they can come and find some help. Did I get that right?
I still, I'm confused about that. I mean, $5,000, is that still part of the charity? Or we're talking right now about this space, as I understand it?
If I could be clear, if I could clear it up, if you'd. The $5,100 is for services that they give to our citizens.
Right.
At four, four and a quarter a month, so it equals that $5,100. So it's a trade really for the space.
So they don't pay any rent then, per se?
No, it's given to the citizens.
Okay, so it's totally, okay. Now, I'm, I mean, they do an awesome job in, but they're one of 20. Are they not one of 20 that we donate?
I don't know the exact number, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing, please, Jim? Please state your name and address.
Jennifer Campbell, Executive Director, South Valley Services. I can give you our PO box, 1028, West Jordan, Utah 84084. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, I appreciate the discussion that's gone on, I appreciate our partnership as well that we have. I think in reference to the questions about what South Valley Services does here, we have a shelter here in West Jordan that's located offsite, but we provide in our resource center here, services to West Jordan residents. On average, we opened in 2013 here, every year we serve between about 30 and 40 West Jordan residents and their families. On average, this, well, this last year, we served 259 individuals here in City Hall. So out of that many, 30 of them were direct residents here in West Jordan. In our shelter, we shelter about 16, we sheltered 16 residents here last fiscal year. As part of our partnership here, we have the West Jordan Domestic Violence Coalition, which has monthly meetings where we discuss West Jordan. We meet with many stakeholders here in this room, our police department, our fire department's a part of that, our attorney's office. We discuss ways to better facilitate services for the residents here in West Jordan that are victims of violence. Out of that, we began a lethality program here in West Jordan, that now is the model across the state of what a wonderful partnership looks like between our amazing police department and our services here. Often, your officers will walk individuals over to your resource center here that maybe aren't ready to engage with the services there, or maybe need more help. We meet each week with your attorney's office and look at all of the cases that are going through your courts here to look for best practices and ways to better serve the residents here in West Jordan. This is a model that, like I mentioned, we're teaching other cities and hold to the standard of what cities should do for their victims of violence. I greatly appreciate our partnership here. This has changed the services for your community and for the communities all throughout Salt Lake County, what was started here a few years ago. So thank you, and if you have questions about that, I'm happy to take them.
Questions? Take me pretty well, oh wait, excuse me.
I do have a question, but I have a comment. I want to thank you for your services, I'm aware of some of those things that you do, and we're pleased that you are here fighting those for our citizens, so thank you.
You're welcome. I love West Jordan, I love our partnership that we have here. I enjoy, sorry, I'm a very emotional person about this work. I greatly appreciate the partnership that we have and the dedication that I see from all of your community to help the victims of violence that we see. They're underserved, they're overwhelmed, and you give them a place of safety and security here in your city hall. It is amazing for a city to show that as a priority to their residents, so thank you for doing that.
And if I may add one more thing, I actually toured your offsite facility, it is a part of the facility, you do a good job with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Chief Tom.
Mayor and council, I don't often do this, but I would like to make a public comment about this in support of this. Our partnership with South Valley Services is invaluable to the police department, to the citizens here in West Jordan. Without that partnership, without their resources that we can refer to, refer victims of violence, to particularly victims of domestic violence, we are not going to break the cycle, we are not going to make this community better. And so with that partnership, we will continue to move forward, we will continue to make progress, and we can continue to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7D. Return to the council for comments. Councilmember Haga.
Last words, comment. I move to approve non-monetary contribution of $5,100 to South Valley Sanctuary Inc., and approve the authorized mayor to execute the lease agreement with South Valley Sanctuary.
Second.
I approve the, approve the motion, I'll read it again, since I'm like. I move to approve a non-monetary contribution of $5,100 to the South Valley Sanctuary Inc., and to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the lease agreement with South Valley Sanctuary Inc.
And I second it. So I have a motion by councilmember Haga and a second by councilmember Burton, discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Vote passes five in favor.
And public hearing item 7E has been continued till July 27th. If there was anyone here to speak on this, that item?
Mayor, please proceed, I have a question. Back to 7C. Since we denied that, does that mean the old contract continues as it was?
It does.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go back to the consent items now. Consent item 6C. Who pulled that? Till the 27th? Yes. Okay, so that one's, okay. Consent item E, 6E. Approve the mayor to execute real estate purchase contract with the 869 trust to purchase a lot and mobile home located at 1469 West Bridgeport Way. Councilmember Haga.
So I have a question, I don't know if Bill or Mark want to answer this, but did we budget for the purchase of this property?
All right, we, at the time we put the budget together, I think we had two that were known, and I believe we did budget for that, to do two.
Thank you, that's all I meant to prove.
Second. A motion by councilmember Haga, a second by Mayor Ruff. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Consent item J, approve resolution 16-111, authorizing staff to close 6200 South, August 4th, 2016, for the Tour of Utah Bike Race. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. As a very avid cycling fan and cyclist, I am thrilled and excited that this Tour of Utah is going to tangentially enter our city here along 6200 South, and I wholeheartedly support this. I just wanted to make one change, in that being, again, a fan and avid follower of bike races, I know they don't always run according to schedule, and we have a very tight timeframe listed in the resolution. So I would like to just change section one of the resolution that says that the staff is authorized to close 6200 South from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. I would just like to remove the timeframe and put as needed for the operation of the bike race instead. That would be the only change. If we need to be more specific or more broad, staff will be.
Well, that's an interesting one. We try at times, but just because we have to have police there at a certain time and barricades and all that, we haven't had a problem in the past of the, you know, of bike races meeting certain schedules, but I guess I would defer to Doug if he had any feeling one way or the other on it.
No, we can, we will be there. Typically, that actual portion closure that we actually need is much less than that. As you know, these bicyclists are not slow, they're very fast. In Park City, when we have some of those legs up there, they're upwards around 70 miles an hour. Of course, that's downhill, they won't reach those speeds here. But again, that timeframe should allow us to accommodate everything, and I see no reason that we couldn't accommodate it if, if for some reason something happened, they were running a little bit behind schedule, we could accommodate that. My officers are going to be there to help, to facilitate that.
In that case, I'll just move to approve as it is? Second. A motion by councilmember Jacob and a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion?
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to move to close session in the conference room, and adjourn from there, the discussion of character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, a strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water right or water share. So moved. A motion by councilmember Nichols.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Burton. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor of that.
Mark, can you hear me okay?